And those are really cool. I've been in line looking for the votes.
Oh, please call me. That is, yes, I do this all the time. I do it every single day. But I do so many, I have so many. But I would be pretty good at that.
I'm probably going to go to her. She has to be.
It's okay. I just got some American.
Can you like send out those?
Yes, I'll let her know.
Yes.
And whatever you want to see.
Okay.
Call me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Saturday.
Where we will go?
Eric, but not you?
No, nothing.
Okay.
It isn't, I don't know if it's expensive to drive. It says, and that is.
How many square meters?
Yeah, yeah. It's still so high. People think that. I don't know. I don't know. We're spending a lot of money. So I'm going to go to the other ones. And then wanted to go. And now I can go to the rest of them. It's better than going and go. So people go very often. Five minutes. And, uh.
Coffee.
Yeah. That's.
There's something going on. But that was coffee.
Well, that's wonderful. Because not everybody. Yes. Lots of them. I know a lot of people who don't have that. That's why you're trying to. Yeah. There's an area to try to. I'm not sure if there's available, but. Do you know what a majority? I just need to ask and I'll be doing the. Mixer, just mixer. I need to do a picture. That's it.
But they're all going to do it.
Yeah, no. I don't know. I mean, tell me. I will.
Yeah.
I will.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yep. I will.
Yeah. 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 Look who this. You know, it's real. Yeah. Yeah.
You are.
I am.
Okay, just make sure you were here so I'm getting ready for you being here. What I'll be, I'll be interested in saying to their representative presence and making questions.
Yes. Yeah, I think you can't hurry for a break. So. So. I get that. Yeah.
This is your table. I'm not sure if I have it or if I'm.
I read. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
They were talking about. Yeah. That's all right. Yeah. That's all right. Yeah. 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 That's a big case. Yeah. 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 They were talking about. Yeah. That's all right. Yeah. Yeah. I'm glad you're exposed. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, February 24th, 2025 meeting of the Markville Board Works in Safety. Meeting is hereby called to board. Please call roll.
John Lillywhite.
Present.
Mayor Costin.
Present.
Kelly Bray. We have a form.
Thank you. You know, I used to say. Um, prior to tonight's meeting, you were given copies of the Monday, February 10th meeting minutes in your packets. Are there additions or corrections to the minutes?
No, I'll make a motion. You approve the minutes as presented.
I will. Second said motion.
And a motion made and second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Motion carries. In our unfinished business, we had a sewer adjustment last month that we wanted to discuss a little further in depth. It's the 1375 Maple Court. It was $871.51. Is the homeowner present? Would you please step forward to the podium, give your name and address?
In Triana 1375 Maple Court.
Okay, are you a tenant or are you the homeowner?
So I'm kind of both. My mom owns it, but I submitted the form.
Okay.
And paid the bill.
Okay.
You do all the hard stuff.
Huh?
You do all the hard stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, the reason we, the reason we tabled this last time was because it was our understanding that, uh, you guys were made aware of this and we just wanted to get some of the details.
Yeah, so I had called the city in September when I noticed that my bill was a little bit higher. I asked them to come out. They said they would come out and check to see if it was on their end or on my end. Came out, said it was on my end. My husband was looking for another job, um, so we waited until he got a job and we could pay it. And then we hired someone and then paid it.
Kelly, do you have any questions or?
So you paid the September bill?
I'm.
Paid after the repair.
So you paid the September bill? You just didn't call anybody?
Yeah, we just, I'm talking about the repair.
Okay.
Yeah.
So did you get to call anyone for repair?
I was searching for someone to repair. I waited till after the holidays until we could save up to pay for it. Had someone come out, dig, repair, and then, sorry. And then submitted the form.
Okay, so did someone come out in like September or October to tell you how much the repair was going to be?
So I had called, um, what's his name? I called a plumber. He came out, said he couldn't dig, that I had to wait and try to find someone to dig. And I said, okay, well, you know, ballpark, how much is this going to be? He said probably 13 to 1500. And I was like, okay, well, my husband doesn't have a job right now, so I'll just wait. The guy that came out from the city said it was a small leak so that I had some time. So I said, okay. So then, once my husband got his new job, his first paycheck was in November, the holidays came, we started saving up. And then as soon as I noticed the bill getting higher, I was like, we got to get this taken care of as soon as the ground is not, um, frozen. So then I contacted the plumber that came out, said he could dig it and that he could replace it for 1300. He came out, he did it like that next week, and then that's when I submitted the form.
I'm satisfied with that. Um, I don't have any further objections. I would make a motion that we approve the sewer adjustment application for 1375 Maple Court.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to approve the sewer adjustment for $871.51 for 1375 Maple Court. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you for coming and expecting us.
Yeah, thank you.
That's just something that wasn't on the application that we need to talk about.
Yeah, sorry. When they reach out to me, I tried to ask them clarified questions so that way I knew what to expect when I came, but I didn't get anything in return, so.
You did great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda, Mr. Porter, you've got the Bubble Fest 2025 fund run. Yeah.
Good evening, Lord. Uh, we have one street, special industry closure application, as the mayor said, for the Bubble Fest 2025 on Saturday, the, uh, 16th of, so, August? August, yes. August 16th. Hey, I'm not good on numbers tonight. You're. Um, and it is to go strictly down Pike Street from the venue to Home Avenue and back. Um, it's pretty basic. Um, I will, unrelated but directly, uh, we have now added signature lines to the applications. So in, in the future, we'll be signing off on these so that we do have documentation that the board actually approved it. I should have said it from the get-go. Anyway, Steph really doesn't have any objection. There is a representative president who would have questions.
I would entertain a motion regarding the closure of Pike Street.
I would make the motion that we approve the street closure application for Bubble Fest.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded. Are there any questions regarding the Club Street closure?
There are not.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, it just was pointed out that this, these streets that will be crossed on the way, I guess the North-South Streets on the way east on Pike and back west on Pike, those weren't listed in the application.
I'm sorry, close question.
The names of the streets that would be crossed.
Yeah, all of those, yeah. We've been dropping your kids at all the cross streets, Wayne, Ohio, property, et cetera, all the way out to Home Avenue and back.
Yes, I'm just making sure that the applicant understands that they need to be.
Yes. Um, I believe that, that she's aware that they have to have crossing guards, for lack of a better term, at those intersections.
Can I, can I ask a silly question? Since this is a fund run and Mr. Dunn and Mr. Oaks just put a lot on the sidewalks in that area, is there a reason that maybe the sidewalks could be used and crossing guards there and not have to close the street?
I would not think that would have enough, uh.
With?
Yeah, I wouldn't think enough people could fit on the sidewalks.
They like to run side by side, sometimes two, three, four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they do do a good job. They did an excellent job the last time in making sure that every street was kind of crossed.
Did, did you want to address?
I, I, I wanted to know exactly for the intersection, sometimes you're going to tell, um, how many per intersection do we need? How many people and what age they have to be for every?
We, we suggest it not be under 18.
Okay.
And we suggest you have one on each side of the intersection.
Each side, for each. Now, there are intersections in there. I'm pointing to my calculations from Google Maps. There are 10, and but, so that's 20.
There's 18 blocks.
There's 18 blocks. Okay, and so the little alleyways that are actually, we don't have to do those, the alleyways that come in, there's like four of those up and down. We don't have to worry about those, having people at station those as well.
That's a, if you have personnel that you can put there, that would be great.
That would be great. One on each side. One on each side.
That's the preference.
Okay, okay, that's great. And then, yeah, doing the sidewalk thing, we are anticipating people with strollers and families, and it's not a sanctioned like 5K or anything. We're just shortening it to just do that, and they're, when they come back, they're going to run through foam for the bubbles, the whole fun. So that's really, if we can do the street, that would be lovely.
Okay. So any other questions?
No.
If not, a call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, aye, opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
I'll send you a written confirmation.
Thanks.
Next on the, the agenda, uh, maybe some discussion tonight. We had a homeowner appear for sewer adjustment, sewer adjustment. Do we want to look at the possibility of, you know, if it's over a certain dollar amount or something, to maybe have the homeowner here to explain, uh, why it's so much or why it went three months or whatever? What's, what's your thought?
Um, I think my initial impression is that, yes, we probably should, especially if we, you know, have some outrageous amount. Um, I don't know, I don't know if it should just be a dollar amount or if it should be, you know, issues that have gone over a certain amount of months. Or maybe the best one is issues that persisted after they were informed. Um, I, I, that's, that's the one that kind of hurts me the most. If, if you knew about it and let it sit and there wasn't a good reason for that, I'd like to have a discussion. But I don't know how we, uh, legislate that, for lack of a better word.
I feel like the water department has done a nice job of letting us know when, when there's been a problem or issue. I mean, I, I think, I do think in our bigger rentals, if there's a, if a second one comes along in 12, within 12 months, I do think that person needs to come in. But again, it's, it's hard to lay down a line, just because I feel like the water department, the, the procedure they go through seems pretty official, but today I felt like it was wrong to.
I, I mean, I, I would say something that if, if we were going to lay down a line, uh, issues that persisted after they were warned for more than one billing cycle and, you know, maybe anybody that's on their second or third, uh, you know, issue in a, in a calendar year probably should come on in and chat with us about it. Um, I don't know. Mac, what are your thoughts?
Our water or utility department does a wonderful job. They usually catch leaks before the homeowners even know it because we can see it, uh, by the radio read and the usage immediately goes like that. So within a day, they're, they're contacting them, saying, hey, you've got an issue. They even try to help them locate it if it's in the yard, if it's wet. Uh, I agree with you. It, it's tough to put a dollar amount because there's different size lines. You know, some can go through more water, that'd be more expensive. It's the timeframe that bothers me more than anything. Initially, they did a wonderful job explaining their situation. We all get it. Um, but that's not always the case. This month, they just, you know, it takes them two or three months to pick up the phone and call somebody. And that's where it's wasteful for everybody.
Might suggest if the delinquencies exceeds two months, just like you heard tonight, they're within a dollar amount for residential, it would be two months for commercial, that's just.
But according to Mr. Coffey, we, we always have that option of not voting, passing sewer adjustment and asking them to come in the way it is now.
I just, I, I hate getting into a position where we're picking and choosing who does it. I, I would, I would personally feel most comfortable if there was a.
Standard?
Yeah, something that could be applied equally to everyone. Um, and you're right, if something comes along that we didn't anticipate, we can always ask them to come have a word with us, but, uh.
So you're looking at saying a motion and can anyone? Anything that's gone over two billing cycles and is their second time in a 12-month calendar period?
Do we have the authority on this board to make that? Or does that, does anybody know?
I would look to our legal counsel, but.
Well, I think I know the answer. I mean, if you have the authority to call them in at any point to explain a bill, I would assume you'd have the same authority to then call them in after, uh, two months of having a delinquency.
You, you do oversee the utility, utilities, I should say.
That's your call.
So are you asking, do we have the ability to set a standard?
Yes.
Like where would that standard be written?
Be within our minutes.
Would it require resolution?
I'm sorry?
Are you asking me what would require a resolution? Um, yes, if you're going to make the standard that went, went forth, uh, hence, yes.
So you may want to ask your colleague to draft a resolution and bring it back to the board.
Certainly, if that's what you all would like me to do, I can put that note down.
So we will entertain a motion to table this item until our next meeting.
I, I would make that motion.
One second.
Motion made and seconded to table discussion regarding appearances for sewer adjustments until our next meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Speaking of sewer adjustments, we have three tonight. Uh, 210 East Sumner, $131.74. 1385 Cora Drive, $576.50. 1290 East Garfield, $342.29. Are the questions regarding these?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions on these. Kelly?
Um.
I would make a motion that we approve the sewer adjustments, uh, as presented.
Motion made and seconded to approve the three sewer adjustments as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Motion carries. Next regular meeting of the Board of Works in Safety will be on Monday, March 10th, 6:30 here in the council chambers. No other business, we are adjourned.
I'm working. I'm working. I'm working. I'm working. I'm working. I'm working.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, February 24th, 2025 meeting of the Markville Council. Meeting is hereby called to board. This time, I would like to invite the fire department chaplain and our county coroner, Mr. Mike Ellis, to come forward to open us with invocation or please remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here and an honor to be here. Let us pray. Most precious heavenly Father, we thank you Lord God for this day that you've given us, and we thank you for breaking the weather. Father, we thank you so much for all that you're doing in our lives, and I ask you for your divine power to enter into this place. I thank you, Lord God, that you're about to touch people's hearts and change lives in the way that only you can do. Let any and all business that is conducted in this place that you watch over us, and as I said, touch hearts and change lives. Father, we give you the honor, the praise, and the glory for all the things you're about to do. I thank you for every heart that is here. I thank you for the firefighters that are here, Lord God, and I thank you for every individual sitting in these seats. Be with us and guide us, Lord, in everything, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the court please call roll?
John Badger.
Present.
Phil Dickert, Senior.
Present.
Phil Dickert, II.
Present.
Josh Barron.
Present.
Susie Lips.
Present.
Ben Mahan.
Present.
Ann Miller.
Present.
We have a form.
Thank you. Prior to tonight's meeting, you received copies of the Monday, February 10th, 2025 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Make a motion that the minutes be approved as presented.
Second. The motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. At this time, I would like to ask the fire chief to come forward with a special presentation.
So, uh, Stephen, come on up here. Matter of fact, just bring your whole family up here. I think this one is great. Bring him up, bring him up here. Get him a little bit.
You know, my little apartment.
I know, this is crazy, right?
First time.
Great. Saw Stephen the other day, it was a lot bigger, and I was like, yeah, Lord, he's shaped up, isn't he? So Stephen, um, I've been up here a couple of times now, I'm the fire chief in the last five years, he did some retirement stuff. And, uh, I'll, this one hits me hard, I'm the fire chief. And, you know, Ryan did, and all the other guys before have hit me hard. Chad Cook was a big one. But Stephen really hits me hard because, uh, riding around in the bicycle in Kenworthies here, we used to ride our bikes around town all the time when we were little and always stopping here. Stephen was here, and Stephen bailed me out a few times with my mom because she was mad at me, and I would do something and he did it for me. Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. But, um, as I, as I've gotten to get to know Stephen and all that, I've been a wonderful guy right here. And he has had me buy more things on the internet than anybody else. Don't be afraid to push back or anything, stuff like that. But congratulations. I just want to let everybody know, the firemen here know, but, um, February 27th will be his actual last day. It'll be at noon, we're going to have, um, a gathering. You have email, we'll. Um, but at noon, we're going to have some food and come say hi to Stephen, and that's going to be his last day, so anyway.
And on behalf of Sydney, I would like to present to you the plaque that Stephen Healy in recognition of 36 years of public service, 1989, 2025.
Thank you. One of the last things I will say about Stephen is we had Bean Suffer here recently, and he comes in and, you know, at the Bean Suffer, you always have the retirees there, and they start telling stories, and it's a little too soon to tell me some of these stories, Stephen, but, uh. stories, Stephen, but, um, but a lot of fun times been had in this building, a lot of fun times we've had here. I got a short period of a short window, but he played with me a lot in here and, um, but I tell you what, I'm gonna miss you. I know the guy sitting here today, we're gonna miss you, you know the door coming up to you, so. Thank you. Very much. Congratulations. Congratulations, thank you. Come over here. Been a long time here, you're one fireman.
And again, you're all more than welcome to stay, but if you also want to leave, we completely understand. We do need to conduct a public hearing. We need to conduct a public hearing this evening, so therefore without objection, council will be in recess for purpose of the public hearing. This is for ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash one eight nine seven, amendment to the city of Martinsville sewer use ordinance, ordinance numbers two thousand five dash one five five four and two thousand twenty-four dash one eight eight nine. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Dunn to explain a little bit what this is.
It's, uh, apparently when we passed the ordinance, there was one provision that IDIM wanted included and it reads the following. The city of Martinsville has a legal authority to accept or deny any new or increased discharges from any indirect discharger. What that means and what they're trying to accomplish here, they're trying to protect our little microorganisms, the little critters that make, uh, the treating the wastewater and everything possible. And we're protecting that by preventing chemicals and primarily wastewater haulers from dumping into our system. Believe it or not, there's a difference between what's in a septic tank and what we have down there on Rogers Road. You can't mix them and there's times where chemicals also get into our system. And we have had times where we've had to go to another wastewater treatment plant and borrow or get some of their microorganisms to restart our process. So what by including this, what that's gonna do is protect our wastewater facility and the whole, I'm trying not to be too graphic here, the whole process. And so that's why it's needed and it is a requirement. It's not something we, we can't, uh, IDIM insists that this be included along in that ordinance. Are there any questions?
I've got a question. With this including dumping from a camper?
We're going to have some discussion without a motion.
Well, since it's a public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing, I'm sorry, okay.
We, we have the right. This gives the city to the right to refuse anybody, an outside source to dump into our wastewater, into our sewers. And we've had this done in the past. We had one gentleman that was pretty clever and he pulled his, uh, tanker into his garage and he and the floor had a, an opening right in our septic system. It's, of course, has been stopped. But it's those types of things that can cause problems for the entire system.
I think John's question was if you were out on the weekend in your RV and you came home, could you dump into, is that?
Into the clean out or something, yeah, you could do that.
It's not something, we just, from what I understand, we can't have someone that goes to the clean septic system, bring in a tanker and then dump.
This is more commercial.
Okay, I just figured here with chemicals in those RVs and didn't know whether those would mix with chemicals in our sewers.
That's a good question. Uh, we, this does give us the right, I guess, if it was done on a real regular basis or something, uh, that's a good question. I'm not sure.
We add them in the safe for seconds, sanitary sewers, that's why they put them on there. So I think we'd be all right, but.
And, pardon me, we used to have a dumping station approved at the fairgrounds also.
Yep. That's what I was wondering, do, do they dump out there?
For private individuals. We've had many haulers till ask if they could, and we can't allow that anymore.
So there's a private dumping station at the fairgrounds?
No, just a facility here under your personal RV.
Oh.
But that doesn't go into the city's sanitary system then?
It does. They're not so much concerned about that as they are the commercial.
I understand that.
And, uh, 'cause you never know what's in those tanks and of course chemicals. If there was a, an industrial, if there was a business that was discharging, uh, and we knew about it, we could shut it down real quick.
My understanding this is verbiage that IDIM is wanting us to put in.
We have, they're, they are requiring us to include this with the current ordinance.
We also have places though that we do monitor that. For instance, Twig has a permit on what they discharge and they test it regularly and you turn that in by IDIM, so there's, there's a procedure if you happen to need it.
I just knew a lot of people have RVs and I didn't know if them dumping into our system would have an effect or not. I know it's a lot less minute than what you're talking about, a little catch up.
Much smaller quantity than a commercial trash, yeah.
Any other questions from Mr. Dunn from the council? If not, before I open the floor to public comment, just want to remind you have a two-minute limit. Is anyone wanting to comment on this during the public hearing? If not, then we will close the public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one eight nine seven. Without objection, the common council meeting is back in session. First item on tonight's agenda is the unfinished business of the council's appointment to the police merit ward. Mr. Deckard, have you made contact?
Yes, sir, I have and has officially accepted, uh, the candidate is Eric Anderson.
Okay.
I would second that nomination.
The motion made and seconded to approve Eric Anderson as the council's appointment to the police merit ward. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Congratulations, Mr. Anderson. Does he understand what he's getting into?
I, I did my very best to explain it to him.
All right. Uh, the new business, we have the first reading tonight of ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one eight nine seven, the one we just had a public hearing on. Uh, if there's no further questions from Mr. Coffey, there's no action that will be taken this evening as this is the first reading and so it will be on the agenda for next meeting for a second reading and for a vote. Prior to tonight's meeting, you were given claims to review. Are there any questions or comments regarding the claims?
I'm going to motion approve the claims.
Second.
The motion made and seconded to approve claims. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no, the motion carries. Is there any comments from the council this evening?
Uh, yes, I have one, well, maybe one more comment. A quick question, um, do we know if we're gonna be getting some more new restaurants coming anytime soon, think?
A likelihood, yes, because just two weeks ago, we got the state, nine parcels that are down at Ohio Street, didn't change. Ideal location at one time, there was even a Chick-fil-A that stood down there, but this been two years ago now, we established that and the houses behind it on, uh, Northwestern will come down and call it that project.
So I know zolos was brought up at one time, is that still kind of in the pipeline?
How we understood and I'm happy to fact that one of our local residents has two zolos franchises.
Oh, okay, very good, very good, okay. No, that, that's it, thank you.
Anything else from the council tonight? Anything from the public this evening? If not, uh, just a couple of things real quick. Uh, tickets for the Chamber of Commerce State of the City Dinner will be, which will be on Tuesday, March the eleventh, may be purchased through the chamber office. And please be reminded that the common council will have a workshop town hall meeting next Wednesday, March third, here at six o'clock in the council chambers. Uh, this workshop will be open to the public and public comments will be received. Uh, no final decisions will be made during the workshop. Next regular meeting of the common, oh, Mr. Dunn?
It's Monday, you said Wednesday.
I did. Well, just say if anybody was listening, Monday, March third at six o'clock here in the council chambers. Uh, next regular meeting of the common council will be on Monday, March tenth, here at seven o'clock. No other business, we are adjourned.